It's like, you know, it's, you know, you know where I don't put that, it's like, whatever we do, you know, it's kind of, you know, the right direction because once again, so like, I'm trying to get my mom to like, do like.
Yes.
Hello.
Welcome. What's that? My mic?
Hello, everybody. Welcome to December Bike Ped Trail Commission. Who we got? We got anybody online?
I'm here.
Allison is here too.
Ted Nelson?
Yes.
Hey, guys. Why don't I see him?
I'm here. I can see you.
Thank everybody's word for it. So I think at this point, we're just missing Oliver and, right?
Chris.
Oliver and Chris. Motion approved the minutes from last meeting? Thanks, Michael. Second?
A second.
Got a second? All in favor? Any discussion on this? No? Did we see them vote? Oh, I see. All right. Well, one of our objectives for this coming year was to do a better job of public relations and community outreach. Rick jumped on that. Thanks, Rick, and pulled the group together to kind of lay out some thoughts and ideas on where we would start. So I'm just trying to pull that up. Hey, Rick, do you have it in front of you? Could you start? Maybe tell us?
Well, yeah.
I think, you know, I think what we want to do is, and there are a lot of ideas on that outline. I think it would be great if we came out of this meeting with a couple of actionable items that we could start working on, right? So I think that's kind of the goal for us.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Michael, Lori, David, and Ted. We had five people at that meeting, which I was thrilled about. Michael and Lori agreed to kind of lead this discussion, and from my notes, which I think were included in the packet, Michael did kind of a summary of.
You might have to be sitting with your mic on so we get recorded, yeah.
Michael, the summary of talking voice, it's just a little more concise.
So, Michael and Lori, take it away.
Cool. So, yeah, we, we came up with a lot of ideas, but maybe just to back it up real quick and make sure we're on the same page of kind of our goal and, and where, where this came from. Last meeting, we talked about a community outreach element of our work, and that's always been one of our kind of, I don't know what we've, we've called it in the past, kind of an arm of what this coalition has wanted to do. We've always talked about, you know, whether that's a public relations or education. That's always been part of our mission. And then in the map, in Map Carbondale, that was touched on a little more, in a little more specificity, and I put that in here. That pulled out a couple of things. There was a PR kind of education component. They, in map, they mentioned a travel training guide, which is kind of like kind of some of the wayfinding and mapping of the networks. And then working with community partners to develop messaging on all the stuff that we're trying, that we talk about all the time around multimodal. So we, we tried to start to kind of gather all of our thoughts around that and, and try to come up with what are, you know, if we, if we wanted to get the message out there, what is the message? And how do we get it out there? And so we kind of just started, it was a brainstorming session on, on kind of what the Bike Ped Commission feels are important messages to get out there that would support our mission of creating a more friendly bike and pedestrian community. And we, you know, our goal is to do that as a commission. And in, and as laid out in the map, you know, our goal to create that more friendly bike and pedestrian community, do that through calming traffic, minimizing the cars, improving safety, and providing infrastructure and opportunity to do all these things. So we broke it down into, I think, four, four kind of buckets of of topics for the messaging priorities, and this is all kind of to bring back to this group to discuss more. We didn't like make any decisions or anything, but wanting to start kind of organizing our thoughts and focusing our discussion on messaging and what this commission feels is important. And if there are messages that we feel are important, kind of as a commission, we can take that upon ourselves to communicate or suggest, make recommendations to the town to, on how to communicate those or, or where to focus. So between the, thanks, Rick, for printing this out, between the printed handout and the, the notes that are linked in the agenda, they're, they're all kind of the same thing. I just tried to organize them more on the printout. We figured that could be a starting place for a discussion here. Make sure we didn't miss anything. You know, we did look through the map document and try to find what was in there in terms of education and outreach. But over the last few years, it's come up enough times that there's probably something missing in here.
Yeah.
What else, Lori?
Yeah, I think what I came away with that brainstorming session was in the time that we're waiting for our projects to be implemented, implemented, like waiting for budget or the summer to come back, building awareness of many things. First of all, that our, that our committee exists. So getting the message, did you know we have this commission in our town to educate people that we exist, inviting people to our meetings? So sort of this idea I saw somewhere on the sheet about civic pride of Carbondale and the personality of our town. So getting word out that we're actually working for you, these volunteers, you're welcome to come be a part of it. Messages about what we're doing in the town, like we've talked about why, why we painted the bike lanes, why we had planters in the middle of the street. So it seems obvious because we talk about it, but when I'm out there, people don't really know too much about why we're doing what we're doing and what's going on. So awareness of our, of, of this commission, awareness of the projects we're doing, safety things like reminding people of the rules of our town. If you're riding your bike or a scooter, you should be on the street unless you're a child. If you are walking or walking a dog, you may be on the sidewalk. Bikes should not be on the sidewalk. So I think we talked about those kinds of message of safety. A message to pedestrians, a message to bikers, a message to people driving. Hey, pay attention when you're driving, slow down, share the roads. So specific, we got pretty specific about the messages that we wanted to, to give out. Oh, did you know that there's freeways to get around our town? We have the downtowner, the connector, we have a recycle. So educating people about that. And, and also including like future things, like the crossings on 133. Maybe making more of grabbing some of the credit, like, hey, how do we all like the new crosswalk on, at the city market? And to becoming a new one across from the Montessori school. So we talked about specifically what messages we wanted to get out there, and then how could we get them out there? And rather than inventing the wheel from the beginning, we thought about jumping in on other committees that we have in our town that are already sending out digital newsletters, for instance, like Carbondale Arts has a newsletter. The Town of Carbondale has a newsletter, which just popped up for me before this meeting. Did everyone, did anyone else get that? I got my little digital newsletter from Town of Carbondale. So we talked about who can we partner up with? And if we can create a message, and it can be a rotating message, could we ask these other committees in town if we can just jump in on, on their newsletters? And we had also talked about mailing lists. We thought that there was something in the town that already existed that had a large mailing list with like prepaid postage, that maybe we can get in on that if we wanted to print up a newsletter. So those were like some of the brainstorming things we talked about. How else can we get the word out? KD&amp;K, totally free, accessible interviews, informational spots that we could have them read. Hey, your bike and pedestrian committee wants you to, wants to remind you, if you're riding your bike, please ride on the street. What are those little green paintings on the street? Those are charros. What is that? That tells you you should be riding on the streets. So these little informational bursts, using our name a lot just to remind people that we're here and what we're doing. We talked about letters to the editor in the newspaper, which is free. We talked about paid ads. You know, is there a way we can have a little money to, to publish some paid advertisements? And so like press releases, radio op-eds. We talked about a town, a banner, something that we could make up from our, from our commission with maybe a little logo that we can come up with that represents our commission, not just the whole town. And when we wanted to, maybe during a First Friday or Bike Week, we can, as our commission, we could have our own banner. Mate, we have one?
Yeah.
Oh, cool.
So we have a banner.
Haven't, I don't remember seeing it. Oh, okay. So then we kind of had fun, like thinking of what could be some slogans that, that we could come up with? And if it's all right with everyone, I kind of brainstormed some more. Could I just read some ideas? If, oh, the other thing is, we talked about, I think, is it Parks and Rec or the Chamber that's working on a slogan sort of for Carbondale? Forget which or committee.
Well, I should say, there's this wayfinding committee that is made up with the Chamber and Carbondale Creative. And that's when I learned that they also are working on something kind of similar to what we're doing, probably based around the take it easy sort of phrase, but could be wrong in that. So they're kind of working on their own kind of branding slogan, you might say, as long as, and as well as signage and how the signage would look like. And at least in the wayfinding committee, we're kind of sitting back, waiting to see what they do to see if we can piggyback on it, or if we go to like something like Carbondale Cares, because they've created something really fantastic and they don't want to share it, which probably won't happen, but it's just something that is happening currently. I didn't even know, but.
I'm sorry, the, the group that's working on, I lost your point there. They're working on wayfinding, but out of that, they're, they're, they're trying to come up with a branding message?
Well, during the wayfinding meetings, it's when I realized that the Chamber and, and you can correct me, Carbondale Creative and, I think, even others are meeting on their own, you know, obviously to work on the Chamber messaging. And I think it's based around take it easy, possibly.
That's a, that's a bigger effort, I think, at branding and creating, in the, with the goal of economic development, increasing business, getting people off the highway. So they're looking at a big picture. What do we need to do on Highway 82 to get people to come off and do, you know, visit Carbondale, you know? And where, and if they do, where should they park? And how do we get the information to them about what's in Carbondale? So that's a bigger effort, but with the Chamber, the Creative District and other, other folks, they're very interested. I actually have an update on that. They're very, very, they much, they want us as a committee to come to the table with the, the details of wayfinding for PED and they really want that, us to be in charge of that and to bring that to the table. And we're working together. Actually, I'm meeting with Michael from the Creative District from Carbondale Arts later this week to talk more about where they are in the process. We, you know, we don't want to, we initially thought as a wayfinding committee that we could probably, you know, we could think about a first phase, a few signs this summer. But I'm not sure we want to do that if, if, you know, two months after we do that, they're going to come up with a bigger picture campaign and a slogan and a, and a branding that we could add to our, you know, our sign.
So there's a possibility that what they come up with in terms of slogans, brandings would work for us or that we could add to it?
We would, yeah. We would, and as I said, they're very interested in us being the bike ped, you know, walking, biking, signage partner in that. So it's a little awkward because they're meeting it on a bigger level and we're meeting at a smaller level, just on the bike ped signage part and wayfinding. They're attending our meetings. I mean, Andrea from the Chamber, Michael from the Creative District, Carbondale Arts AFTA has been at our meeting. So we're, I think they're at the table. We're working on this. It's just, you know, we just want to coordinate and make it happen collaboratively and not, we don't want to get too far ahead of where they are if they're going to enable us to.
Okay, yeah.
Brandy.
Right.
And Kevin, you may know about that as well. Like, so if, if I've missed anything, please.
The only thing I would add, just for clarity, is the take it easy is the Carbondale Chamber of Commerce's brand.
Yes. It's, yes, that's a tourism marketing brand. And I, I don't, we don't know if that'll be part of what they come up with, but it might be, it might not be. So that's, that's, that's unknown at this point.
Well, and just something to think about, those brands, particularly for chambers of commerce, change from time to time. So you, you probably want to think about, do we want to, do we want it to live forever? Do we want to change as they change? Or do we want to come up with something new? And I'm not suggesting there's a right or wrong answer.
After our meeting and thinking about that information of this sort of larger effort to sort of brand our town, I started thinking, maybe what we could focus on, something we could discuss here is, do we want to create something more micro, more specific to our committee? And, you know, what do we have in our name? Bike, pedestrian, and trails. Kind of forget about the trails part. And I started thinking, if, if what we're working on while we're waiting to implement these bigger projects is awareness, messaging, safety, education, maybe we could have our own little, little slogan that was more specific to us rather. And then it, it wouldn't be exclusive to, if they do create a bigger, larger branding, we could still, it's not one or the other. We could have both. So instead of, let's say, the Carbondale Cares, which is very generalized, here are some other ideas. For instance, we could have something like Carbondale, walk, bike, belong. Carbondale, one community, many paths. Carbondale, streets that work for everyone. Carbondale, where every path is an adventure. Carbondale, walkable, ridable, rooted in community. Something like that, that's a little more specific to, to what we're doing here. That could exist even with whatever happens there. So.
I, I get that. I understand. I think that's great.
What's it, Michael? Well, just the question that we had too for this group was on, on kind of like what level of community, of capacity is appropriate for us to, you know, there's a whole spectrum of, of a marketing and PR campaign that you could do if, if you wanted to. And on the lower end of that is just some basic communications on, on some of the stuff. And, you know, the town has spent a lot of money and time putting all this infrastructure and planning together. So the idea is that with some communications and awareness, a lot of that could be made more effective when more people know about it.
Right. I, I think these ideas are great. I think the, the structure is great. I, the, the one thing I would add, and I, I think Lori, you touched on it, is, you know, we're, we're talking about building awareness, explaining things that we're doing, what we're doing and why. The other thing I would add to that is to get feedback and support from the community. So I'd add that to the list is, and I think we, we kind of did that with the survey that we developed earlier this year. We got some feedback and started to connect with the community, right? That was a, a, one of the first times I can remember where we actually, you know, put something out there about bike ped issues and we're getting feedback from the community. So I, I like that as well to be added. And, and I, you know, the way I'm, I'm listening to you guys describe this, it's sort of like general awareness, explaining what we're doing and why, getting support and feedback from that, and sort of covering all of this is, you know, a slogan for the Bike Ped Commission that we can use to sort of promote all the things we're trying to accomplish in town. Does that make sense? I mean, everything gets wrapped sort of in a slogan, right?
Well, I think trying to create an identity for this effort, for the, not just for us as a group, but for this effort. We, you know, we're trying to, it's sort of around, around the, the whole idea of the map, the Mobility and Access Plan, that, you know, we're trying to accomplish something through that, to reduce traffic, to improve safety for bikes and pedestrians, to improve the attractiveness of biking and, and walking in this town. Sort of try to create an identity around that. And I think that might tie in well with whatever, you know, the bigger picture. Plan is, you know, come off the highway, come into town, what, you know, check out Carbondale, this, it's a, and here's our identity, you know, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, all your, some of these, it's not lost on me that the outline here, messaging, priority messaging, you started with sort of objectives that came from MAP. Right? So everything's geared towards promoting the things that were established in MAP, right?
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
But also in a more regular way, a more more often, irregular, like you wrote on here, something about like maybe possibly a monthly editorial article, maybe a weekly informational blurb on KD&amp;K. I just think it's like everything in our culture. You know, it's like Instagram, you got to keep posting stuff. And I, I think.
It's a campaign, so we've got to stay on it.
Right.
Keep reminding people.
Through the news, like we talked about different, like I learn a lot of my information on KD&amp;K. Somebody else went and walked and got the newspaper. Some of us got our digital newsletters. So we talked about how can we access those, particularly even free? They're free and available, small town. And just these little informational blurbs. Hey, be a good neighbor. Your sidewalk, if your neighbor's away, let's keep our street safe. Brought to you by your bike and pedestrian committee, you know, those kinds of little reminders.
If we're trying to take this work you guys have done and, and figure out where to start, what do you guys, where would you like to start? It seems to me that once you figure out how to, my thought is, once we figure out how we want to start messaging, it'd be pretty easy to touch in here and pick out a couple of messages we want to start with.
Can I make a comment, please?
Yeah.
I, I can't tell from my video screen if Chris is there at the meeting. Oh, you are there? Okay, so the, so the question, one question that I have is looking at the KD&amp;K website regarding underwriting and putting out public service messaging. Does, would, would the commission be in that category of underwriters, which is not, I don't know if you would consider it expensive or inexpensive, whatever the rates are for the number of times that a public message can be put out on the air, number of times per week, per month, per day, whatever, all the different programming that you have, the schedules that you have for underwriters to do that, how would we fit into that, that listing in terms of expense? And, and the second comment is, I really liked a lot of those slogans that Lori just came up with, that you, that you mentioned. I thought some of them are really cute and some of your, your, your visual logos are really cute also. And so my thought in terms of where are we going next is coming up with the specific mapping of where we would like some of these things to be put up, because as this, this committee, committee of multiple members is putting together all of this signage, my thought is what they're particularly looking for, for us from is guidance on where to put certain kinds of, of expressions, logos, slogans, that, that kind of thing. So take it away. It's my comment.
I guess I'll respond to the first part, do you want me to?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. The, the, I mean, the PSAs, you can submit those. You don't have quite as much control essentially in that regard. They get put into kind of the hopper with a bunch of other PSAs that other people submit, and it's kind of up to the PSA editor basically to play them, and they'll usually play them for a week or two, and then they'll get cycled out. So if you want something to actually like play more consistently evergreen or actually at a specific time, then you want to start talking about underwriting, which is Tracy's domain. I can't really tell you about the real specific nitty gritty of. But if somebody wants to email Tracy@KD&amp;K, you can get the, all the rundown on different packages and rates and things like that. And, you know, he can, he can customize it to whatever desire you want. And then another note on that, the Chamber has a good newsletter that for sure should be included. And, and I mean, I'm trying to think. I feel like there was something else that came to mind.
Okay. And, and, and that was one reason we wanted to bring it up here is just to make sure that we're not doing something that's like, whoa! You guys put up bulletin boards around, you know, you put up flyers around town talking about shoveling sidewalks, you know, so we don't really have any direction of whether every newsletter that's out there, we're good to go after in inclusion, or we can put stuff up, you know, flyers around town or, I don't know, other things. But we, you know, we're just like, well, these are all great ideas, but we should make sure, you know, that it's not a problem.
Stepping on anybody, yeah. Yeah, Kevin?
This might add at least a little starting clarity to that specific question. As the town and as a arm of the Board of Trustees, we'd probably prefer that we, since we have a Public Information Officer. Public Information Officer, that, that sort of stuff goes through her before we just start hanging things around town. That being said, I talked to her today and if you guys want to get something in the newsletter, you can do that every month if you want to. She said she would save space.
Mm-hmm.
The, what she'd really like to know earlier is what the topic is. And then if you send her like the messaging, if she gets it a week before the end of the month, she can put it into the newsletter. It may be edited to a certain degree, but not for content.
I, I wonder both for Chris, you as a trustee and, and Kevin as a town administrator. Is there a possibility of money for a campaign so we could actually? And I'm, and I'm not talking huge amounts of money, but you know, a couple thousand dollars that might help us just with an occasional ad or something. You, you know, that, that requires a little bit of some funding. Is that, has that ever been done? I mean, I'm thinking in terms of to support a campaign, to encourage bicycling and walking and reduction of traffic, just the overall effort that we're trying to achieve, is there money for that?
So it's, it's both of our, both of us have a part in that because so like the current budget includes money for some of the stuff we talked about with tactical urbanism. But you also have a base budget in there of, I think, twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, that we haven't used in a couple of years because we, we, we did it for that purpose. A few years ago, we started, uh, got some money allocated to run some ads. And, um, I think we decided it wasn't really cost effective. Um, we had some placards, sort of safety messaging. So it was our, our attempt three years ago at doing some committee outreach, but we can dust that off.
And I, I think we, what we want to do with the committee is, is develop a campaign so that we're not just throwing stuff against the wall. We have a, you know, strategy, an occasional ad that supports strategy, that supports news, that supports the newsletters that we're doing on our own, newsletters with other organizations. So we, you know, it's a strategic effort. And if there's some money in there for an occasional ad or something that we've got to pay for, that we can do that, which that would be very, very helpful.
Right.
And we would, Chris, and we would come to the trustees or Kevin with sort of an outline of what that might look like and then.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, you're, uh, uh, a paid campaign.
No, a campaign that might include some paid parts.
I'm sorry, a, a campaign that would, might cost some money, right, that we would, right. And, uh, uh, everything I'm thinking through is, is sort of free to us, right? The newsletter, the website, you know, KD and K. So what, what's this component that would, that would cost something? What, what is that exactly? Even if it's not fully fleshed out, what, what are some of the ideas you're thinking about?
Um, you know, KD and K. I mean, Kate, some, some sort of paid, um, KD and K, uh, so, um.
Or paid app, so per sun, right.
Um, or in so per sun, so that we, um, you know, we can occasionally just feed, uh.
So we're not just relying on public service and that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Or printing something for some reason that we wanted to post around, printing costs, little minimal.
And we're, you know, we're investigating, had no idea what, you know, the basic underwriter level of KD and K support would be. I mean, that, um, but again, you know, we're just in the exploration phase. We just need to know if it's possible, if we can include some funding in there, so.
And I'd be happy to talk to Tracy, I'd be happy to talk to Tracy about that together, that information for us.
Okay.
Great.
I guess my point was even, even if it's in its infancy, you do have some money already in the 2026 budget.
Right.
That you could use. And if you decide, hey, we need to maybe bump this up to five thousand dollars or, or whatever. I think that could be done in the future. And I would suspect that barring some financial meltdown, the trustees would be pretty receptive to that.
Yeah, and I mean, it's interesting that Environmental Board is sort of facing the same question right now as they want to communicate a lot of stuff around recycling and composting as well. So there is potential, I think there's also just a discussion to continue to have about. And I mean, the Rec Department obviously already spends quite a bit of money promoting their activities and stuff as well. So I don't know if there's a more comprehensive messaging, you know, approach at some point. But I don't know if it, it may not, in the, in the meantime, I think it's fine to just have each commission work its own magically.
So, go ahead, Lori, I'm sorry, yeah.
In answer to your questions specifically about how, what can we do, um, in real life, what can we do next to start this? I would say two things, what message do we want to get out? And number two, what vehicle? So if we come up with a few points, for instance, we talked the last meeting about, um, doing a recap of what happened in town this summer, kind of a retrospective um, of an explanation of, uh, reminding people, this is what this committee did this summer, the bike lanes. Um, we can jump on the board of, we have two new crosswalks over 133. Um, and also, uh, on your feedback, uh, um, point, reminding people that these meetings are open and that they're invited. So a recap of what we've already done. Um, congratulations on the things we actually did that were permanent, like that's huge, two new crosswalks on 133. Inviting people to meetings and looking ahead because it's now winter, reminding people, hey, there's, um, you don't need to jump in your car to ride across town, you could call the Downtowner and use your connector bus. So maybe, maybe just that as a little blurb. And then we pick KD and K, the sun, uh, the, the newspaper, uh, in English and in Spanish. And, um, uh, the town of Carbondale, the Chamber, and Carbondale Arts also has a digital newsletter. And also updating our own little website, our blurb that's part of the town. So I think if we did that, that would be a lot and that could be immediate.
Yeah, and we can also very easily, I mean, now that it sounds like we've got an okay to do stuff, we could very easily come up with a once a month, twelve different ideas. And once again, they're not set in stone. I mean, if we set something for May and, you know, in April, we're like, wow, you know what? This would be more appropriate. But we could pretty easily put together a schedule of monthly topics. Um.
Like what are, what's a share-o?
Yeah, I mean, I have.
What's a bike lane?
I mean, um, Lori's brought up, you know, most of the stuff that's on my list. Um, you know, I think maybe one of the things that wasn't brought up is, you know, another thing saying, hey, you know, not only come to our meetings, but, um, you know, creating a list of volunteers to help us, whether we're doing whatever, a walk audit, whether we're doing a First Friday. I mean, there's times that maybe we might need additional people and that will also help us with later, you know, staffing the commission. Um, just weird things. I don't even, I don't have a dog, dog etiquette, dog walking etiquette, you know, ADA issues. I mean, it'd be pretty easy for us to come up with a monthly plan. And then we'll get better and better at learning how to get these in, you know, the monthly newsletters and such like that. Um, and I should also say, going back to the slogans, there's nothing wrong with just, I'm not going to say wing it, but come up with something that we think sounds good for the time and starting to use it. If, if it changes later, there's nothing wrong with it. If it doesn't get on a sign, but not to have something, like for instance, I'm thinking we had talked briefly about doing something in, I think it was May with, um, can't even remember what you call it, Connect, Two Rivers Connect, you know, doing some sort of a spring log your times that you bike to school or bike to work or bike or walk or take the bus, you know, some sort of challenge contest. And having some sort of a slogan for what we're up to, um, you know, would be appropriate. But it seems like we, I don't know, as far as the folks who were in that meeting, is there anything else we need to know to continue?
I, I have, um, a question of logistically, since we only as a group meet every month, how, how could we sort of collectively submit ideas for a little slogan and then vote on that? Without that taking months and months? Matt, I guess that's a question for you.
Yeah, we, for Kevin, I mean, we did have a conversation at our meeting about how, and I know how we could share ideas and maintain a Google spreadsheet. But I, I know because of the sunshine laws, we've got to be careful. So I think we're, I think, is that, I think, is that what you're asking? How do we, how do we gather information from everybody without?
Yeah, like even if potentially we left tonight and everybody was going to brainstorm and come, come up with some ideas of slogans. Like I, I've done that, but like if everybody else wanted to do that, how do we logistically get to the next step?
And Evan, Ali, who are, get me if I'm wrong. I think as long as we're not connecting online, we can share thoughts. Uh, so you could, for example, share your thoughts on a slogan with all of us. And as long as we're not responding to everybody, we could take those, pick our top three, we could share some with you and bring them to the next meeting and whittle it down that way, right? That's safe territory, correct? It's tight rope territory, just don't fall.
I, I think that is actually a good idea, as long as you all understand. I wouldn't, I would send it to everyone, I wouldn't. I would blind copy everyone that you send it to so that no one accidentally replies all, okay? Create your list of slogans, send it to everyone, everyone can, yeah, pick out, but you have to bring that back to the meeting and have that conversation in public and then vote in public meeting. You can't decide anything outside or you can't have like a living document you all edit, nothing like that.
That seems like.
That's just the process and that's how it is and that's the only way you can do that.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. Um, and it seems workable, right? Similar to what you brought up at the last meeting where, you know, if you see, if, if you see something, you want to make people aware of it, just send it out. But our job is to not reply all. And I think, yeah, Ali made a good point, no, no decisions made unless it's public. And, um, no, what was the last one? No, uh, documents or what was our last point? I, I like, I forgot already.
No, um, shared documents.
No shared documents, we're all working.
Not everyone working on like a Google document or something.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're getting at really is, um, we want to have a, probably a monthly meeting of the committee, of the Outreach, um, Public Relations Committee. And so what we're doing is gathering information to talk about at that meeting. I mean, we, maybe we frame it that way.
I think that's fine too, right? As long as, um, again, those topics that are discussed at the breakout.
Right.
Sessions are brought back here and you're not deciding or voting on things.
Our committee meetings will be public meetings as well.
Yeah, and they're public, right. Yeah, we've already established that, we've already established the protocol for.
There's five of us, though.
So yes, if, uh, uh, I, I think we have two avenues, right? Email, just, I mean, I would love to see an email of your ideas shared, as long as we're following the rules that have been laid down here. Uh, so we can start thinking about those. Um, and, uh, yes, Rick, we could do an, another breakout, whether it's monthly or whether it's when we need to sort of flush something out to bring back to the larger group.
Right.
Right?
Yep. I would, I'd love to have feedback on, from all of you on the sources that we've identified as potentially partners with newsletters and, uh, media, KD and K and so per sun. Have we, have we missed something?
Well.
Are there, are there partners out there that would?
You know, we, we might have, but we'll find them, right, eventually. I like, I kind of like where Lori went, like we got a few simple messages, we got a few avenues, let's start and see what develops. Maybe we will find other partners or other means to get the message out, right? Um, and I, and I, you know, as you're talking, the, the idea of having a slogan that gets attached to simple messages feels like a really good idea, right?
Yep.
Like remember to use the Downtowner, you know? And, and the slogan, right? Um, so it gets simply repeated, it seems like, right? And, um.
Part of creating an identity, I think, for the effort, yeah.
I do think once you create those things, they are really useful on an evergreen basis to, they can be recycled. Most of them are probably things that are just good to keep repeating. As she was saying, you need to kind of just add, nobody's going to catch it if you just do it once or air, put one ad or one thing. If it sort of has to become kind of a little annoying, maybe even to like, but also like shortened to this, to the point, obviously. Like you have, have to kind of be in a tweet level, level of brevity.
I think one method of outreach or maybe ad that I don't think we discussed is, I, I like the signs that we did this summer and especially if there's future projects um, to do something similar again. Um, especially like if something is coming up, a project in a specific place, putting the signs there and like telling people that we're discussing it at a meeting and.
Yeah.
When the meeting is, um, yeah, I mean, I think that works well just because a lot of things we do are like.
I'm sorry, you were saying to, to get the messaging about the things we're thinking about or doing or planning, is that?
Yeah, or to get people to come to meetings, um, to get, yeah. If there's, if there's specific projects, just if they're like location based, it makes sense to advertise them like in that location.
Andy, sorry, I missed what you said at the beginning, where did we do this?
We had the signs for the, the summer. Um, that was, that was specifically to get a, a survey for the, um, Long Hendrick.
Oh, the.
The, the signs we put out with the QR code?
Yeah, like the little like long sign thing. Um, yeah, I think that's.
Another avenue to get messaging out.
Yeah, and specifically for messaging about like feedback, getting people to show up to these meetings, that sort of thing.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, really?
I, I should say, one of the things that we would love to have as part of, you know, our year outreach is that there is
Oh, oh, like actually.
QR codes that are out there in anything we're doing that points to our page. And on the page is a very easy way for people to offer feedback. I mean, it doesn't exist yet, but hopefully that's part of the plan.
Okay, so where do you want to start? I, I, I'll, I'll throw it out there as sort of a, a straw man, but I would suggest that, uh, try to come up with a slogan by January for the, at the January meeting. Is that, makes sense as number one?
I love the idea, yeah.
Yeah. What's that?
I think we can do that, absolutely.
Well, can I just ask, does that mean you didn't like any of the slogans that Lori just threw out?
I'm sorry, Ted.
No, that does not mean we didn't like, I think we, I think Lori provided a great start. We, we need to have another meeting as a committee and, you know, toss around some ideas.
Why don't we just select a couple of the ones that she just threw out for right now? For the, for the next, wherever you want to use them.
But I think maybe what we're talking about is at the same time that we're going to create a message, we're going to piggyback on digital newsletters and KD and K and the Soper Sun, hopefully. Um, at that same time before our next meeting, which is January, right? We have the ability for, I, I'm going to email my ideas, anyone else is welcome to do that to the group. We will all individually, um, pick what we like. And then the next meeting, we can say, these are the ones we liked and we can have a vote. And at that next meeting, we can pick, decide on one.
At the next, next January public meeting, right?
Right?
Yep, yeah, I like that plan and then, um.
I, I also think we could, we could sketch out an outline of a potential campaign. I mean, the elements of a campaign, so these newsletters, this media, you know, maybe an ad or two. We could sort of sketch that out and get some feedback from all of you on whether you think that's the right direction with a slogan to go along with it.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, to sketch out a, a schedule or something. Just because it's a, it can be a lot of work and for us to piecemeal things one at a time without a, a plan. I think it'd be really hard to get any of it. Unless it was something we could hand off to a.
I think if we have the general plan, but again, I think we can just start. I think we can pick the, the four things we want to say and just say them. And then we can pick four more things the next month. And I, I think there's a never ending, evolving, living, we, we can talk about anything. And maybe it's six things, maybe not twelve things, maybe six things in the little message. But I think knowing that, let's say monthly, we're going to commit to submitting that message. And we know generally what we want to talk about.
We do, yeah. Um, the, um, I, I like, I like the idea, I think the, the town's newsletter. The, I, I like, I like the idea, I think the, the town's newsletter, which I assume is catching on, I don't know what the current circulation of that is, but it's only a year old, if that, right? I mean-
About a year.
Yeah. But I think, you know, that's a place where I'm sure the town would like to see information and messaging get consolidated and where people know they can go. So I, I love using that, I'm not sure, how, would it be for specific items where the Chamber or the Arts Newsletter might fit in? I mean, how, how would we use those platforms?
In my mind, it would just be, we would have our, let's say it's six bullet points. And then we, we reach out to, to Chamber, to Carbondale Arts and Town of Carbondale, those three. And we just say, hey, this is brought to you by this committee, can we tag this on? They don't care what our message is, I don't think.
Right, okay.
So we have one message once a month and then we have these five outlets and we just-
I mean, uh-
Send them.
Don't forget, the Downtowner is available on cold nights, boom.
Exactly.
Easy message. And maybe things that are more detailed, like what we did last summer, right? And we all had fun, right? Because that's what you write in those essays as a kid, right? We all had fun. They was, uh, uh, would be maybe in the town newsletter. So they'd be separate, different platforms for different purposes.
I wasn't thinking that, I, I always try to think of what's the least work? The least work is to have one and you just send them off.
Right.
I don't know why a creative, because I get the, the Creative Arts and I get the Town of Carbondale. And I just kind of read through them all and I feel like it's a, a variety of information.
Right.
I'm not sure.
Well, we're not going to put a, my question is, would we put a recap of what happened last summer in the, in the Arts Newsletter? Probably not, right?
I would.
You would, just put it, you'd put it everywhere.
Probably be too long. And, and we're getting into a lot of details. And if there is actually an outreach committee, the committee can
Tackle that.
hammer this whole through. I guess I just want to make sure that I, just to clarify what we can and can't do. So for instance, last week there was something Matt had brought up and it was even on my list of, you know, hey, we should come up with a way of prioritizing projects. I'm assuming it's okay if I were to put out an email to everybody saying, hey, at this next meeting, let's chat about this and here is some processes that Durango has and Frisco has. I mean, I can throw this out in advance to everybody and say, let's chat about this.
We just can't answer you.
I would say-
To reply.
I would say if you want something on the agenda, ask the chair. You don't need to send that out.
Right, right, right.
Um, if you want to share articles, you're more than welcome to share articles with commission members. I wouldn't necessarily make it a group email. Like, don't send it, everyone in the-
Just send them individually.
Just send them individually.
Send the same thing to everyone individually?
Yeah, or you could send it to one person and then blind copy everyone else. So it's one email, it's just the way you're sending it to people.
So just that we don't have risk of-
Yes.
We can reply all as in that.
Right, okay, got that. And also as far as if the committee comes up with, okay, here is what we are going to be sending out to the Sober Sun, KD and K newsletters for the month of January. Does it need to be approved? Does everybody here need to see what's being sent out or?
Yeah, that, that would need to be approved by the committee. If you had a message that you were sending out to the public, the whole committee would need to approve that.
Okay, so basically timeframe wise, you know, well, once again, the, if, if we are working with the city newsletter, they'd want to know. Okay, we, we just have to-
I think that makes sense, you know, the sunshine aside, I think it makes sense that if a message is coming from the committee that we discussed about it and approved it at, at this larger meeting. Is that, is that, but, you know, once we say, look, yes, draft a, a letter to this, you know, Sober Sun and include these five points, we don't need to approve the letter, right? We can approve the messaging. That's what we've done in the past and, does that make sense?
Okay, so basically it, it sounds like, what, 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 probably it sounds like we do is we would come up with something that would, we'd like to get published, put it on the agenda. You know, there'd be an attachment on the agenda, people could review it ahead and just say, hey, this is it for the month.
Yeah, that would be great.
Let us know if there's any modifications.
Yeah, and you can review it, you could review that document here and say, edit like these parts. So it's a public process.
Sure.
And then you, yeah, and you would just have to schedule it so that, you know, if you wanted to get it in a certain paper, a certain time, you just have to work with your schedule and the day that your meeting falls and the day that-
And I, I don't want to forget what Kevin said earlier about, we have a town information officer, is that what the title is? Right, so I think it makes sense to have a dialogue with them just about what we're, what we're doing, when, where, right? It's to, to close the loop on that.
I think that that loop could actually be closed without adding any more time to the process because if you're going to have it in the agenda, we send the agendas out Thursday before our Monday meeting. I can have a talk with her, ask her if she has any comments for me to bring up at the meeting and-
Okay. One, one other question, when, do you guys know when content, when the newsletter goes out? When the town newsletter goes out?
Well, other committees have used the newsletter and the Facebook, town Facebook page. And Anna says it's totally cool if one of you, not all of you, obviously, we just has a dialogue with her and just sends basic information, who, what, where, when, why? And then she can create something, so-
What is, what does it go out, when, yeah, I-
I'm not sure, but you can start a, you can start a dialogue with her.
Yeah, great, okay, we'll check with her, yeah, okay.
So that goes back to what I was saying earlier. If she knows in general that you're going to want something and what the topic's going to be, she needs it at the bare minimum a week before the first of the following month because they go out on the first.
Okay.
That's why you got it today.
Okay, go to her first, got it.
Go to her through Matt.
Means, that means if our meeting's usually very close to the first, like if we discussed it and you all approved what we're going to put in at this meeting, we'd already be too late for this month.
Yeah, goes into the next month.
Which is fine, I mean, we just, that, that's why the whole point of
A role-
creating a schedule and you know the right-
Getting, 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 yeah, getting it started, so we start to fall in sync with everything.
And there, there's nothing magic that it has to be in the newsletter before it can go to other outlets you're using.
Yeah.
So, yeah, okay.
And presumably people can email Lori if they have other slogans or things they want to put in her thing that she'll then send to Matt, I guess.
Well, I was going to send it to Matt and BCC everyone, so everyone, sometime during this week, maybe tomorrow I'll do it. Everyone can read the ideas and then can create their own.
Submit to Matt.
And submit it to Matt and BCC it. So we'll all have potentially some things to look at, maybe pick your top three and then we all come together next meeting, right? And we vote, commit to that.
That kind of sounds weird because it kind of sounds like you're narrowing down decisions and sending them off. If you're going to pick three, just bring them back to the meeting. I don't think-
Yeah, that's what I mean.
To Matt.
No, that's what I meant, in your mind, pick three.
Under, we, we will-
And not send them all back to you that you pick.
That's what I meant.
Bring them back to-
Basically, yeah, everything will come back here to be discussed in public form.
Yeah, okay.
To be neurotic. For me, it really helps me to read stuff before the meeting and
Yeah.
ponder things. So this list of slogans that everyone's coming up with ideas, is there something happening before the meeting that's available for us to look at?
Well, if you get it by the time he can put it in the agenda, right, as an attachment.
I'm not sure I understand the-
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't quite understand what I was saying, but is it okay if everybody gives Matt ideas and he just puts together a list in a PDF agenda document?
You're going to get them as a BCC. You'll get them.
Yours.
And everyone is, anyone who has an idea will do what I'm going to do.
Well-
Yes, and we will, we will, it's okay to, it is okay for a list to be drafted as long as it comes back here. Yes, I would, I would then draft a list, bring it back here for discussion, all right? And so what are you looking at there?
Okay, so it sounds like what, what you're saying is everybody's replying over and over and over to the same BCC list.
Okay, no, no.
No.
So this is what will happen. Everyone send your slogans to Matt. Matt will generate a PDF of everyone's slogans, it will go in the packet before the meeting so everyone can look at it and decide their top three.
Right.
Does that make sense?
As a final step. But every, every, everybody who's, everybody share their list with me, okay? And blind copy everybody else. That way everybody will get the list, I will take it and create a master list for the next meeting, okay? Because we want everybody to see the ideas, that was the whole idea.
Well, if they go in the packet, they will see that, all the ideas.
What's that?
If your lit, master list goes in the packet, they will see them in advance of the meeting.
Yeah, but I think it's good if they can see it, further in advance they can see it, the better.
They will be seeing it if we're BCCing people, like if tomorrow-
I know, I understand that. I'm just trying to make it like as efficient as possible, but also the way that all of these commissions work is that any material goes into a packet so that the boards and commissions have time in advance to review it, to show up and have the meeting and discuss what's on it. You're more than welcome to do that process.
It'll go in, it'll go in the packet.
Just don't, you know, just make sure that-
But we're, I feel like we're cutting out the PR committee. The PR committee will meet before our next commission meeting. So we can talk about and make recommendations to the full
Right.
commission.
Right. I mean, I think we're, we're, we're getting a little down the wizors. There's got to be a way for information to get into a packet, right? It's, it's not like Matt just dreams it up. It's, so, yes, send me the information, okay? If, as long as we're not, it, as long as we're not making decisions, keeping a shared edited document or having discussions with multiple people, more than three, two people via email, because that would be considered a meeting, then we should be okay, right?
Yeah.
And if we're not, let me know.
Yeah.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
Otherwise, I, I, I mean, I got to get information into the packet, that's how I get it, because I get it from chair.
Right, and the whole idea is that you're not having a conversation outside of this public setting.
With more than one other person.
Right, and I mean, by B C, by, by copying everyone and sending multiple emails, it's kind of like you're having a discussion, but trying to do it in a way-
I think, I think we're just sharing information, we're not discussing it, we're just sharing something to think about, right?
Reply, no one's replying.
Right.
No one's, there's no conversation.
Right.
But that's, that's not including our committee.
No, that's a separate thing.
Right.
That, that's public, documented, posted, right?
But it seems inefficient to me. Shouldn't the information go to Lori so that our committee can vet that and report back to you? And then we send you a list of what we want the commission to approve? I mean, we don't need a committee-
We could do, we could do, it can be done both ways, right? If, if you want to have, if, if we're going to call another committee meeting, another communications, PR committee meeting, then that list can be talked about at that meeting, right?
Right.
And if that's going to be done in the next couple of weeks, then ideas can get, yeah, sent, but we'll make sure the ideas get sent and get flushed out at that meeting, right?
I just want one, I want to go back real quickly just because I, I think there's an opportunity for us to have a common message that goes out to the community, all the newsletters. But I also think that we have to, there may be some hybrid situations. We might need, might be better off to go to the Chamber of Commerce, for instance, and talk to them about what we're trying to achieve. There may be one message or two that is particularly appealing for them, that they're willing to, you know, support for us.
Yeah.
As, as opposed to us just saying, here's what we want you to say. I mean, there, so we, we, I would suggest maybe with Carbon Arts, with Chamber, we go to some of these organizations and say, here's what we're trying to achieve. We want to be in your newsletter, what do you suggest? Here's some ideas and, and we're collaboratively. Other newsletters will just do a, you know, a, you know, basically a monthly request for inclusion of specific.
And the town has done promotion of the Downtowner as an underwriting thing on KD and K earlier this year. Was that, did Downtowner itself do that or did Lauren do that?
Sorry, I don't-
So, I mean, yeah, there's definitely precedent.
I think, let, let's, you know, the, the, the second topic we had tonight was really geared to start getting some structure around annual reviews of projects and, you know, how we're going to sort of institutionalize what we did last summer, make it flow better. But I, I think we can put that off until January. So we'll table it for tiny and talk about it again in January. And it just gives us a few minutes to sort of wrap up this discussion, which-
Can I just ask if anybody here knows if they've seen other towns? Like, I know I've seen Durango has a process, you know, a printed process for how they prioritize projects. I just didn't know before we let it go another month, if anybody has seen other towns that might be worth looking at that, have some sort of a created process?
I mean, I think, you know, we started that, right? We, we came up with a list, we tested some things, we, we sort of had some, an assessment of what we, we did and what we liked and didn't like. We got some projects that I think we want to try to move forward right away on, some that we're still considering. So I think, you know, we started to develop a process, it was, it sort of came together quickly. And, you know, I think we'd like it to run a little more smoothly and, 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 but I think, David, we are developing a, a process by which we can propose and consider and have projects put in the pipeline and prioritized. So I think that's sort of what the second topic tonight was, was going to continue to touch on. And I, I think that starts with, every year it should start with an assessment like we did last year, really that Rick ran, which was, was that done in March or? Yeah, so, you know, come this March or April, we need to think about teeing up the next set of projects. But I think, you know, we've taken up a lot of time with this tonight and I want to, I want to close it out with, with some direction. So I, I think if we wait until January, we'll be okay, we'll still be able to, to meet that spring deadline. I, I just want to make sure if, if the goal is, Rick, to call another subcommittee meeting prior to January to go through this, is there, is, can we narrow this down for that committee meeting? So committee, committee has some very specific things to work on, does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
So open for suggestions.
Okay, I think number one is a slogan, right? I, I, I think a slogan and then some messages tied to that slogan that we'd want to begin to attach. Makes sense as-
Messages about the slogan or just the slogan?
Messages, like if we're going to put like, remember to clear your sidewalks, you know, and the slogan, right? So if we, I, I would suggest that a, a good goal for the subcommittee would be, let's try to pick a slogan or narrow down a slogan that we can bring to this committee in January so we'll have a short list to vote on and bring some messaging that we might want to wrap with that slogan that we would then put in the Sober Sun or the newsletters, right? So we, coming out of January, say, okay, we voted on a slogan, we've got it and we've got five messages we want to start getting out using that slogan right away. So we can then go to, you know, Carbondale Arts or whatever and say, does this work or how can we make this work?
I would just add that a good slogan would encompass all the things that we would want to say. You know what I mean?
I, I can't wait to see that.
A slogan would be an umbrella that represents our committee and anything that we choose to do in this committee is going to fit under that slogan.
Right.
So-
And that's the challenge.
I think, I think it's pretty simple, like we, we vote on the slogan next time, we commit to creating the message and we pick the newsletters. One, two, three.
Let's just take a minute to be really clear. So we got a slogan- So we got a slogan and we got some messages, because I think what you were saying is, let's take an opportunity with the slogan to, to find places to blast out little reminders, little awareness messages, and the slogan would be attached.
Yes.
Right? And I suggest that a good goal for the subcommittee would be to come up with a, a, a list of, short list of slogans that we could vote on and some messaging that we would attach to that slogan initially. So we all kind of walk away from Jerry's, we're saying, we know what we're going to do. And, and then where we would go with those, where we would take them.
Yes.
Right, where we would take that messaging. So that would be number two, which is, we now have a slogan and we have messaging. Where do we want it? Who do you want approached to get it out?
Right, three, three things, slogan, message and the vehicle for getting the word out. Three, three things.
I, I wouldn't let the second thing get too lost. And I mean, I think the slogan, if you strike gold and find something that everybody clicks on, I think that's great. But I wouldn't like kill yourself, I mean, trying to find something that says it all in one perfect phrase could be hard.
No, I.
So I wouldn't get like too racked if it's hard to find something that, like I would try to, try to get to a good place if you can, or hopefully you'll find something awesome. But I wouldn't, but I would save a good amount of time to really flesh out what are the, what is the core message that, what are those things that actually we want to say in the message and like how to say them really clearly and succinctly?
Right.
So that people like, because that's hard actually. I, I, I know it's, sounds easy to come up with things, the idea, but to actually smith the like message down to something that's really, really clear, you know, can be hard.
Yes, I, I, that's good advice.
Man, I, I better cancel my order because I love this one. I already put in 500.
Got t-shirts, hats and koozies.
I'm trying to take what the outline you guys presented here, which is, okay, newsletter's a great idea. But we want to come out of January with some actionable stuff. Like this is a slogan, these are the five messages we all agree on. Yes, let's take this to Carbondale Arts and see if they can work with, let's take this to Chamber and see if they can work with it.
Yeah, that's exactly.
Yeah.
That's, I think we're all on the same page. Yeah.
Good.
For clarification, when you say messaging, I don't know if quote, a message is sidewalks are for walking, streets are for biking. Is that what you mean by message?
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's saying every message will fit under a slogan. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the slogan's a slogan and.
Or, or.
We have intent.
I mean, you guys outlined, you know, 10 or 12 messages on the front page that all could be that message, right?
Exactly.
Right. Outlets, specific outlets where we go and anything else. I, I mean, I, I like, I like the idea of a recap of what happened last summer, you know, between, and it kind of sets a stage for the coming year.
Almost something you could try to get earned media of like, just have a reporter interview Kevin or something.
Yeah.
Or a letter to the editor and Sober.
Yeah, or do.
Yeah, I'd like to see the Sober Sun in and maybe in the newsletter.
Rick could do another recap like you, because you did a really nice one last spring.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Biannual seems like a good kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Penance for that.
And for the Bike Ped page on the website, that would be, I think, a good use of that as well. And, yeah, we can, we'll do that for sure.
And, and the vehicle, I think that was a great idea. Like maybe that also helps you think about some messages. Like maybe you try to think of specifically something that Carbondale Arts would be more excited about putting in their newsletter. Because I, yeah, they might not be that excited about talking about, I don't know, bollards or something on, you know, if it's not really artistic unless, but if it's got an angle. Well, okay, yeah, the, the, the lot, the, the unknown art of traffic.
The shade of green of, having the shade, the particular shade of green of the sharrow on the street.
Those, those were my kind of three things that I'd love to see come out of the meeting, but you know, any, whatever else, right?
It's a great agenda.
That's great. But I like it. I mean, it's a, it's sort of a first phase of an eventual campaign.
Yes.
Sort of low hanging fruit, media sources, newsletters, what we want them to say. And if you can attach a slogan, that'll be really cool.
Yeah, yeah, actually, the other thing I would put on there is a schedule. I like that. Some kind of schedule. Because, you know, I think that, you know, it, I, I think, haven't tried this before over the years, the hardest thing is to get going and the other, second hardest thing is to keep it going.
Yeah.
Right? So I, I think if we can pick a few places to move it, get a schedule to keep us honest and it'll just start to build.
And try to get an arsenal of messages that
Yeah.
you don't run out of, or you sort of have them all loaded hopefully at a certain point and then it's, they can get recycled.
Yep.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts on?
So I should put down, just a reminder for next year, a year from now, that if we do have bollards in town for the holidays, we should paint them to be candy canes.
Okay.
And the knitting, the knitting circle at the library on Mondays can knit little jackets for them.
Nice for that, that work on the Communications and Public Outreach Committee and bringing that stuff back to us and for the discussion. Anybody want to have the last word? No? Ally? We said it all, we've done it all?
No, I'm, I'm stucked. I, I do want to make it to some of these extra events.
Yeah, I see you. Great. That's a great, that's a great thing to leave us with. Thank you there. All right, guys, thank you for, uh, thank you for everything.